Thank you. Just a quick thing, I don't want to take too long. First, I want to congratulate the people that came and spoke about the fracking ban order. Very, very important. And I already question the order we have now, and now we can put more chemicals in the water and think of the future. So basically, we're meant for doing such important information. I'm also concerned about the tax that's going on. I want to make sure that tax dollars are not going to be my service. So that concern me also. Also, with the police department, the human beings, the discipline, you know, and all that. But one reason I'm here is because of the problem on the conversation we had last time.
Yes, sir. I was small, and it's only out of thought that we can do that. We can do the rest of the process, and then we should move on. The application and the proof, that I would have to pay a fee. So to follow the process and continue with it.
I'm moving to the table. I'm moving to the table. And therefore, I'm in the process of completing all of that. But I think one better towards the access of artists who could paint at the end, which I'm very, very proud of, and I want to graduate, and I think he's the best. And Sam?
Okay.
Stand up, please. So later on, when I find this kind of thing, you will realize that there's a vision that I had in this town that we can jump through that. It seems like to me, politics and stuff, the power's kind of what I'm saying, there's more people than politicians, and you got the politicians running the show. It just seems to turn us, you know, our interests never really get there because of money in our lap, you know, when we're public and liberal. But it's good that the people come, because they are the real power, and the politicians should listen, you know.
Thank you. Thank you. Also, anybody else?
Hi, my name is, yes, my name is Danielle Humphrey.
Yes, that's all four of the neighborhood addresses you have written in your.
Danielle Moore, 11 Joyce Comeout Avenue. I don't think I've come to the street today, but I've been hearing everyone talking about the water and what goes down to the river. Now, these little springs are, are they going down to the river? They go down to the river, correct?
Yes.
Well, okay, did anyone ever take a look at what went on Joyce? You know what I'm talking about, on Joyce Cover, about last week with all that rain, I meant, wow, this is getting to be so much worse when this water's coming up to the food town parking lot. Well, what is the city going to do? And then also, that's where Joyce Cover and Power Street is flooding now. It's not from the drains being clogged, whatever's going on underneath. And that's also with Joyce Cover and Townsend Street, where this is really getting to be extremely bad. What is the city planning on doing?
Well, I know that I walked, you know, in the summer, I usually got moved on to that all the way back to the little, it actually looks like I always see the, you know, so we need to do a break in to the federal general case, I mean, I want to go to the general case, but I see them, I know. And I heard, I saw it, because I have to do it. I survived by somebody working at a school like that, too, well. So if that's full of garbage, or that guy just want to pile up in that rain, then what is he going to do? You should have seen that, you should have seen that, that lot of trash.
I'm not talking about, if it's clear of garbage, I'm talking about underneath, however that garbage is going in.
Well, that guy is going in, I go through.
Whatever they did to Joyce Cover there with the last procedure they had, and believe me, I know you've been getting complaints from other residents, where that's made it worse, and when I say worse, that used to be Joyce Cover and Charles Street. Now, yes, and how, you would have went literally, excuse me, I'm not a good speaker, yes, where that water backs up all the way to the parking lot of Food Town, and then it also comes through Railroad Avenue, where just because you don't see water on top, how that's going to be backing up into a lot of people's drains? And is that mixing with waste, and it goes down to the river? Are you able to answer my question? Is that mixing with waste, and then goes down to the river?
I have not, I have not been able to answer that. Over, do you mind if I do that?
Yes, we are working on that. Some of the culverts have existing old water mains and sewer lines that go through the culvert. We have appropriated some money this year in a capital budget to take them out of the pipe to eliminate the backups that they do cause. We are working with North Brunswick, though we had a common line with North Brunswick that comes along, runs all along the Marlin Brook. We are working to then clean it out, to survey it, to see where we could have problems with the pipe system. We're putting cameras under the pipe to look at that. We are looking at converting some of the flow from the George Road area that all comes down through there to different locations to again, try to minimize the volume of water that we're getting at that point in the system.
So I will leave that to you, thank you. So, so you're saying, pretty soon? There's so many, they can cap it over two hundred, two hundred fifty, two hundred fifty.
And it's a good job this time, not making it worse? Please do look in, look into that, because I've been depressing a lot of people, like I said, just because you don't see water on top of how, maybe four blocks away from where that's bad, how it backs up into people's system, it depends what type of systems you have, and it's really spreading further down, just because of that little string, but please, I hope the city does just stop paying.
There was one man who was trying, you think that, you know, right this week?
To Mel Pittman, 29 Oseem Street, close to New Jersey. Of course, I want to support the fracking ban also, you know. Normally, I don't get claps in this room, but I take what I have to give. I support the fracking ban, and also, you know, like Governor Neil said, you know, our water is the best that we did have, you know. Real community that provides a lot of body water, and hopefully one day it just go back to getting water from the falls or so. We want to look towards that also. Also, the last council meeting, you said you drove up Joyce Comeout Avenue, and you noticed there was a fatal accident, police car, and you said there was a sign there, and...
It did, and all?
It did. I rode by it today, too, and there is a sign there. My question is, when did the sign get there, because it wasn't there prior to the accident?
I kind of saw you. Right after, right after you said that I was, you know, from the middle of the town, and I started counting, and there was a sign there, and I was always thinking it was, I don't know, it was just a city.
I know, right, because I know I wasn't going crazy, and things, they had, they had a candlelight visual for the person, and, you know, looking through the pictures, and I looked, oh, there's no sign there. But, when I rode past, there's a sign there, so somebody that, you see, has to know who put the sign up.
Who did you put it?
Yes, the last, this is how it came up in front of the council, the sign was put up the very next day. I don't know why, I didn't actually.
Hey, hey, I'm not, hey, I'm not doing, I'm trying to...
No, no, I didn't even notice, because I see that, you know, that at night, and I can't understand, this sign, I don't know what people were talking about, but I'm...
Ah, because I, you know, I'm not like going crazy, you know, you put up a old folder, it looked like it was an old sign, but I know I'm not signing it. So, all right, let's do it. I also want to comment on last meeting I was at also, police director, he used to be the director, Katney, brought a situation about drug-related incidents in the country. And he mentioned me because I had it next door to my home, or whatever. And he said, you know, he mentioned things about the nature, about the amount of drugs up, see, the amount of money, guns, bullets, pills, all sorts of things. And I actually came to counter with one of the young men, I was arrested in the entire situation. And when he walked up to me, first thing, he had a confused look on his face, and, you know, he said, you know, when I was down at the station, they apprehended her. One of the detectives came to him and said, you know who's partially responsible for this? He said, who? He said, Tormel Pittman. Because he was constantly calling down here to the police station and complaining about the guy. Now, I've never called the police station in damn my life, and I don't know what the officer's intention was, you know, maybe I kind of got an idea, you know, but Joseph LeGrand comes in here a lot, you know, he complains about the murder of his son. And if you're familiar with this situation, his son, he had a candlelight visual where someone just put their arm around and walked him up the street and shot him because of what a police officer said. Like I said, okay, even if why the officer said that, I will, I will get to the bottom of it. But I'm focusing on an even bigger problem. My problem is, we have a law enforcement agent that's planting a seed in a person's mind that's false. If you have a law enforcement agent that's going to lie about a person making phone calls to get you incarcerated, you have a law enforcement agent that will plant drugs in your property. You have a law enforcement agent that will lie when he's documenting a police report. And I want to know, like, how did I even come into the equation? Why was my name even thought about? That's the problem that I have. We have a bigger problem, because, you know, as we, as a community, we try to fight violence, we think it's the blood, we think it's the crips, we think it's one guy because we live in this area, and that guy because he lives in that area. But the last person that we think will be instigating this situation is the police department. That would be the last person that we assume are putting things in it, hey, man, you know the guy from the bill said that he's going to do this to you? And that guy leaves us the police department and shoots somebody up, and we'll never know the police was behind it. That's an insane thought. I could have got shot, but no one would have never knew the police. If the guy said, you know what, because he knew me, he had a little level of respect for me, and he didn't believe it, he brought it to me. What if he didn't have respect for me? What if he did believe it? What would I, what position would this officer put me in? What was it, and this is me, I can't think that this is the first time this officer or any other officer did something to this nation. So I think we have a major problem. So now, when I see gun violence going on within the community, I don't know who's behind it now. I can't say it's a gang. I can't say that it's because it's black on black crime, or it's because it is us, because of that. Now, I have to think it's because of a police officer. I had no evidence of that prior to this situation, but I know for a fact that if he lied to me, what did he gain from lying? Was he going to get a promotion? You know, he's surrounded by other officers, did any of them say, hey, you lied? That's insane to me, to have an officer do this. Now, you're looking at an entirely different community, my eyes are looking in a totally different direction now, because I have no idea, I don't think you could ever stop violence in the country now that you have police officers doing it. It'll never happen. I, I'm trying to work with gang members, I'm trying to bring them together to have a sit-down. And even if I have a sit-down and the violence still continues, you said it because they don't want to change. You would last think, 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 it was a police officer said it? And this is the department that we're dealing with. Now, I want them to say, for instance, if I bring a guy to know which would be in double trouble, what the guy's willing to say which officer said it? You know why I didn't mention him or bring him forward yet? Because they'll punish him. He'll become an even bigger target once he comes forward and says which officer said it. So what do a person do in a situation like that? How can we counter, how can we counter those type of acts? As a community? How can we stop? How can we even have confidence within the police department? Because I was nowhere around a situation when it happened, I had nothing to do with the situation, but yet still, they're quote unquote, it's one of the biggest busts in the country, when you get the guy to the station, you're talking about Tormel Pittman.
Mr. Pittman hasn't said who the officer is, and if he's recording, if it's made, then don't take this advice, but if it's not made, the law can come out with internal affairs office and make your complaint, and if there is any proof of him saying, you know, well, that's a game, and then you're probably disciplined, but we have to verify to see if you have any other names.
Yes, that's the only way.
When have, when have internal affairs ever gave any justice to any community resident thus far? Never. Name one incident where a person came with a complaint, brought it to the, but he says this every week. He said, this, he said, this is, he said this every week, he wanted to play without an internal affair. I mentioned about the officer that killed the, that shot the young man in the back of Paragon, how he was driving around and, and, you know, jumping out the car, telling people that you see the tape, and did you do this, he had a swag with him, and the first thing he said was, go down to the internal affairs department if you have a complaint.
You have to come down.
For what? What did, they, they, listen, listen, even, listen, even if I was to do it, right, and bring this up, bring this person forward, what type of protection would he get? When the officer said it, when the officer did it, what type of protection would he get?
Who would get it? The person?
The person.
If he has a little bit of faith, if somebody happens to do it, it'll be what they want to do over there. If we don't say anything, and I know why, if I had to say I wasn't there, so I'm not saying that allegations, you know, I wasn't there, but...
All right.
If he told me that it was, you know, that's a legitimate allegation, somebody should investigate it, so we have to somebody, even if it takes our person to take the risk, it's not for somebody dumb, but...
Let me say, I may ask you one question.
I'm sorry, to make it, we wanted to make a change, we have to, there is some level of risk, we need to have a reason. So if you want to change something, we have to, there's somebody that has to do it, and if we're talking about investigation, there's not a person who's doing the investigation as well, you know, very good, I know the officer was there in charge of, of this person now, I, it's somebody that I do trust, and I know that he's taking, the person who's there. So I would, I have confidence when we put our, uh...
All right, question. Do you believe an officer would do something like that? Your personal belief?
I cannot say anything, because I'm not there, I would be expecting that, and everybody else, anybody, any human being is capable of doing anything, but I cannot say specifically that...
No, I'm talking about a police officer. I'm talking about a police officer.
Anybody is capable, I don't know, because I'm not there, so I don't, you know, I cannot say that they, I didn't even have...
I mean, I mean, because, you know, councilman's tapping his pen on his paper, but he's not the one that was, that was in a dangerous situation. He's not the one that had somebody looking in his face, would have looked like, what if he wanted to, what if he wanted to play? What if he wanted to get, what if he wanted to shoot? What if he wanted, so you can downplay it all you want, councilman, and we can stay as late as you want, but you're riding, you're riding, you're riding out to the hills, you're riding out, you're riding out to the hills, you're not going to, you're not going to be confronted by these people. The people that you're supposed to represent, you don't even be around once you get up from that table and leave here. I do. When I leave here, I go up around, I go on Rips and Abbey. I go to the candlelight visual after a person is shot. Wait, you never, never. Okay, when we leave here, let's make you go to Rips and Abbey.
I'm not in the Rips and Abbey.
I've never seen your Rips and Abbey.
I've never seen you on U. R. Abbey. What's the difference?
All right.
What's the difference? You're talking about you making an accusation that no one has any proof about except you. So how are you going to make any judgment? Tell me how you make any judgment, I'm talking now.
My thing, my thing is this, my thing is this, my thing is this, tell him to shut up. I'm a community resident, he's an elected official.
Do you vote for him?
I vote.
Do you vote for him?
That's right, Roosevelt School.
Don't vote for him.
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 Roosevelt School. Roosevelt School. He's walking up the bomb tree.
I'm order.
Yeah. He's walking up the bomb tree.
He's a teammate, I'm order.
You sure you was a cow when you seen me in North Carolina? Act like you acted, you was in North Carolina. Put your tail between your legs. Act like you acted, you seen me in North Carolina. Act like you acted, you seen me in North Carolina. Put your tail between your legs. We know, we know she's a partner for you, why don't you take the seat and be a man and say what you want?
Captain, I don't want to use you, but he's a teammate. We need to have, he's kind of hot in here. And I don't want to have, listen, don't listen to me. There is a process, and I thank you, because you have been following the process, we have been conversating. We got not having this going on.
I'm not going to be disrespected by nobody.
Again, you are a teacher. Do I...
Hey, you talk.
Excuse me. If we go into the video, we're going to stop, we're going to be, we are not going to. Either we have to follow the process, if we can, then we're going to have to take you out and, and very soon. And I know, and I thank you again, I thank you, because you have been pretty good, and you have been, you have been very respectful, and I appreciate that. Please, continue, if you want to continue, very please, in a productive and in a, in a way that is...
I understand, you're trying to stay in my hostility, my life is put in danger by another officer.
I understand, but there's no, we have to do, and we're starting to answer, we're kind of interrupting, because we don't have enough, there's no idea what we're going on, it's just a conversation, and two people trying to see who we said one of them's going to be down there, and we'll still want them to get their contact close. And going there is still going to happen. And I think it's disrespectful. So let's try to continue having this conversation here, and I certainly, thank you, Mr. Pittman.
Mark Landau, 380 George Street, asked Mr. Pittman, his concerns about internal affairs. I have to smile, because as I remember, nothing was done about the, the way things were handled in internal affairs until the Mr. Deloche was shot, when that officer who was in charge of bringing those incidents of police infractions was finally fired, I believe he was fired, for losing those complaints about police officers. So I understand his concern about how anything would be done.
Do you remember that that case, when you found it, there was that, that, your consideration was, it was going to be horrible? So therefore, there was...
And I believe that was only because of Deloche. There was such a, there was such a bright light, you had all those news trucks out here for days and days after that happened, and that, when somebody smelled it getting too deep, and they let that guy go, they threw him under the bus, that's what happened.
Okay. Yeah, Patrick? My name is Floyd Mopery, I live at 76 Lewis Street, um, for those band factory, um, I'm definitely bored about the whole water situation. I think it's very important that we do have clean water, especially when we can break out our faucets first versus time, and, you know, especially when it has, when you have to think about your generation as far as children, you know, I work in a doctor's office, so I was very interested in the thought of the whole art of autism, and how, I didn't know a lot of that information as far as, you know, things like damaged water can trigger something like that, so I thought that was very... What I'm here about, getting around the police, um, you can, just pass it around, enough for everyone. On May 1st, I was, I was basically a victim of assault and battery, and I went through the, sort of right to seizure as to going forth to the police that same night, I actually called officer up, he came by my house, said, you know, we'll go to the station, since my baby's badly, badly, um, damaged, yeah, so we go to the station, and the officer Ronald, Ronald, I felt like I was being treated unfairly. They took pictures, yes, that was great, but what they gave him was simple assault. So if you look at those pictures, he didn't, that wasn't simple assault, he beat me up to the point I was unconscious, and I woke up from trauma in, in Robinwood. Now, to me, that's a simple murder. That's not a simple assault. So for there, I felt like I was being treated unfairly. Also, I was telling them information, details about him, he had aliases that he's going under, he had other charges in different other states, and I'm letting the officers know about it, the first officer that was working with me, you know, he actually helped me, but then he left. And then two other officers, which is Officer Randall, and another officer, was there, and totally, everything that I was saying was just going in one ear and out the other. And, you know, at that point, I'm just like, why am I here? I mean, you see my face, you know, you understand what I'm saying? So they said, you know, if anything was happening, I told him, listen, he's going to, you know, I'm going to tear it to death, you know, the next day, he was actually calling my house, you know, he actually called my house that day when I got out of hospital, and then he called my house the next day, saying he was outside my house, that he must have killed me, my mother, making terror, you know, threats, you know, to me and my family, you know, and so I called the cops, and the same officer that painted no line, you know, just blew it right in one ear, out the other, they came to my residence, and they were, and the officer that I was on the phone with, he's like, well, you have to go downstairs and, you know, open up the doors for the officer, because I live in a, I live in a building where you have to buzz in to open, open the doors. I'm terrified, I'm like, okay, I really don't want to do it, but I'll do it, you know, only because people have seen him with me before there, you know, because that was my boyfriend at the time. So being that they've seen him before, they could have just let him in, you understand what I'm saying? So I went down, I spoke to them, they act like, oh, well, you know, did you get your restraining order? And I'm like, you never told me anything about restraining, you know, because I was so, I was so pissed off, because everything that I'm telling them, it was just going in one ear and out the other. So I'm like, okay, I'll get your restraining order, no problem, that's what I was going to do anyway. But he's like, oh, well, you know, I'm thinking you have to go to the station, I don't know anything about restraining orders, I was never put in a situation like this before. So then he gave me the address, and then he was just like, okay, well, he's not outside, where is he? And I'm like, I don't know, he called my house, saying that he was outside. So to basically make a long story short, the officer that I was on the phone with prior to them coming, when they were coming, you know, to my house, he said, well, go, go check the whole building, because I told him about that issue, and he said, go check the whole building. These cops were ready to leave. And I'm like, you're not going to check the building, you're not going to walk in, because there's other places in the building where this person was hiding, you understand what I'm saying? Um, I just, I don't understand as far as what their position is, and especially when it comes to domestic violence, I really don't understand what their role is, because an officer, Tony Ingram, you know, I've seen him actually the third, no, the fourth, I'm sorry, that Saturday, he straight up pulled me in my face, well, you're not dead, but we can't do nothing about this. So what do you, what do you have to say to me as far as that? What, how, how am I supposed to work with the cop on this? I'm giving them, I heard that he fled to Maryland, I'm giving them the address that he will be at, because he has, you know, he has children, he has some other of his children out there, and I know that was a spot that he would go to. And I'm giving them the address, and I finally got his phone number, I actually went to the, the police station the day before, I even talked to Tony Ingram, and I'm like, well, listen, I need phone records, because he keeps on calling my house, private numbers, I need to, I need to know his number, maybe can I get some type of, you know, phone records? They're like, no. And then they're making me go back and forth to Somerset and Franklin, because he was , he was, you know, siding in Somerset. So I had to go back and forth, I, I had to give them the restraining order copy, the original copy. All they said was, oh, just tell them it's in the system, we'll, we'll, we'll call them up. I get to Franklin, they don't know what I'm talking about. So I don't understand as far as, with getting around the police, like, what is their job? What do they do?
They never tell you about the 11th of July?
They never said anything about that, no.
The new conference, and all this, I think, that is one I spoke about, that kind of is, and that's just that, and, okay, because I don't know this situation, if you need to send me, I'm saying, personally, because I may, it's, it's a lot of time, and I have been in my times, I don't have anything to do with it, so it's concerning, that, yeah, I wish people are changed, and I can't, I mean, because I don't know, but I hear you, and, so, I, I think our, that's the, what I'm, I would be, just to see, one half being involved in, to be with you.
Yeah, I feel, I feel a little something needs to be done about, about this, because I feel like, why should I rely on the cop now? Maybe I should take management to my own hands and put him out there.
Do you, do you have a name? Do you get, um, is it on, is it in county?
I have it in our...
Do you have it in county? Do you know where it's located?
Yeah, yeah.
Because you said they, 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 they say they restrain more, and then they can also do the town where they perpetrate it is. So some of the jobs, you will take, and then later.
Well, that's what, that's what...
They have, well, they have people that are ready to do that, they factor, that's what they do. And then the police department, that is, gives a restraining order, is the one that serves the person with the restraining order. Or maybe someone after the force starts to flow, and then you have the right to do the police department, they go to the judge, and they, the judge thinks that it's, that it's okay to be one, and then the police department right there, the officer's happy to, to perpetrate it, and they break. The best of the notes is the addresses that they have, or the information, but if it cannot be done, but it feels good, active, hopefully, do you, usually they have a resident Usually they think I've arrested the person, but they, they don't contact him, or he's been, or they're saying he's doing this life, he's there. And unless he has anything, he won't even have any, he, he told the police that person, we do, we do, we do that person.
I understand. I had to put my mother on restraining order as well.
Absolutely.
But as you were saying, that the cops, but it was there not to give it to Franklin, correct?
No, no, no.
To the county.
The county.
To, to the county.
Yeah, if you have the county, this is county, they're the ones that, that the police officers, when they go to the county court, they are the ones responsible to, to factor, and if he's restraining order that he's only within four hours, he said, eh, so that we can go back county to factor to the department that are, you know, they're the ones responsible for the perpetrator, they're the ones who... Usually, like, they're going to, it's a, it's a, it's a, the county, the county gives factor to the police department, eh, which they have. Or he's responsible, he's, he's all the county, it's fact, and then the police department. If they're responsible, you're the police department, when he's done, when the force are closed, he won't read anything, he's got a restraining order after six months, then he's responsible, you know, the police department too. Make every attempt to the number that he's going to pay for the restraining order. Okay?
Bishop Ford, your client. Um, I have a question. Laura Montgomery, she, she somebody, Laura, she's my sister, she's my first husband, she's a member of my organization. I went through the whole ordeal with her. I want to know why your police put this as a simple assault? For the fact that when they found her, she was gagging on her own blood, she was unconscious, she was dying. She woke up in a trauma unit as a body dump. The police officer came to the house, seen her, and immediately asked for the confirmation, he exposed her and do a report. But he put it as a simple assault. What's simple about this? The guy still calls, making terroristic threats, somebody gonna kill everybody in the household. She gave them addresses into Somerset where he was staying, confirmed addresses. Police wouldn't do nothing about it. They said, we can't, we, no, you go notify, uh, Somerset. Shouldn't that be their job to notify? We got a person who, somebody came in here and put a report, it's serious, contact them? No, they did not. Well, she got to Somerset, Somerset wasn't, it's not. Now, we go to our thing with Somerset, because they didn't even get on it either. But on top of that, we, we pretty much ran up about New Jersey because police couldn't do it. So after that, we found out where he was at in Merle, had to confirm the address, took it to New Brunswick. Say, all you gotta do is contact police in that area, and he's gonna be at his address at this time. The cop, Tony King, huh, bag number seven one six six, would not do it. She said, can you at least pull his phone records? He's calling from a private number, and he's making terroristic threats. Tony King, huh, bag number seven one six six, would not do it. He told me in front of me, in my face and her face, unless she dead, there's nothing else you can do for her. What's simple about this? The phone call's still coming, phone records still haven't been pulled. What's simple? I need to know. Can you answer that? Like, what's simple? This is serious. I mean, we talk about my aunt and my, and my cousin, you know, he, he's calling, and I, I've even got the phone call. Answer the phone. I'm gonna kill everybody up in there. No, it's, you don't know what's done to a person, you can't sleep at night. You don't know what's going on. The building we live in, like she said, people know him, they've seen him there before, anybody just let you in. They'll just let you in. He could be hiding in our, in the room where we put our garbage at, he could be in the elevator, he could be anywhere, we don't know. But nobody never even made an effort. So what I did was I contacted a Maryland police officer, who said, New Brunswick has to call us. New Brunswick wouldn't do it. And he said, even if we go and get him, New Brunswick has to want to send for him. New Brunswick not gonna do it. So what's so simple about this? All right, but what is your police job on this situation? When you got a officer, tell you to your face, unless she dead, we can't do nothing else about it? She is a New Brunswick citizen, taxpayer. What, what good is she dead?
See, the town, the parker needs to be done now, if you add a issue with altering the procedure. Again, someone with an unfair, and everyone would make errors. I know, I mean, that's the answer. You guys don't want to hear that answer, but that's the way the procedure is. The guy wants to have a attorney general, goes to the prosecutor's office, comes up with a procedure, you have to follow, and he follows though.
I understand. My, my, excuse me.
Yeah, this is everybody.
Yeah, everybody.
We, we had to do a police job, taking the Facebook, had almost two hundred thousand views and forty-five thousand shares. That's how we ran about in Jersey, because the police wouldn't do nothing.
Eric Stroud, uh, support, and I'm, I'm still a little confused by the situation because I don't understand how much of that was related to whatever, just the standard procedures in dealing with domestic violence, and how much it was related to the county and, and New Brunswick. But I do know that, like, we received some information about this, and so, um, like, I distributed it over the internet, and I, some people contacted us and said that they had information about, um, the, the person in question, and I contacted the New Brunswick Police Department, and like, I'm not trying to put on any, an individual here, this actually seemed like a systemic issue. I was like, oh, I've received this information, um, I want to give it to you. Like, as far as I know, this is an active police investigation, it's written, it was actually, some of the communications is actually written in Spanish, and I don't speak Spanish remotely, and I was like, I want to provide you with this, how do I do that? And they did, and he's like, well, you can read, tell me over the phone, like verbally, but I, there was, there was no email address that you could provide me, or I could send this information, and just like... And, and then, and, and so it was again about the whereabouts of this person, and it was basically like, well, I'll put it in file, and if, when somebody else looks at the file, I'm not going to tell anyone to do so, this information will be found. So my question is first, is just why is there an email address that I can send some information? I see, like, the middle says crime stoppers, I know it's the county, but like, shouldn't there be?
Uh, regarding the crime, the crime stopper, which is covered by the county, it comes to every municipality. If you said it there, Eric, and you know, if you'd love to give it one back, we can talk about it, you and the law, we'll, we'll talk about it next year.
So, yeah, any questions I have?
There's not an email at...
But he got me, that he could have told me that. I said, and he gave me any email.
Sir, Eric, Eric, did I, did I say I'm telling you that?
Stroud, S D R. I spoke to the desk, desk sergeant, and then he referred. But yeah, so if it's not the, that person should know to refer it to the middle, like, county crime stoppers and... And so I don't have to stand up again, this is just an unrelated thing, I just, um, years ago, I, I used to talk a lot about changing the website, and I could be totally unrelated, but the website's so much better now, so I just want to throw this suggestion out there, randomly. Big companies, I don't know if you guys have a software like this, that tracks basically all the things we're saying, all the little notes that you're making on the paper, and, um, it's like a customer service software, so you can track what the question was and when it actually got addressed. And I'm curious, maybe, Mr. Austin, if you know, um, if, that any of the city uses any software like that to track things that are happening? Um, to track, track the question.
I make notes here for follow-up, uh, for myself, like, frankly.
But there's no, like, enterprise system that you guys are on.
I don't use a computer.
Thank you.
Samuel, uh, look one. Uh, yeah, well, I, I'll wait to, uh, discuss this for the event, I think. Uh, you know, there's plenty of information out there, I think it's tacitly, uh, check out any kind of media on, like, all the teams that have it, stuff. Uh, aside from that, yeah, uh, I'm hearing all these stories about, uh, the, uh, police, their response to the lack of... And, um, I sort of have to correlate with that, you know, because I've had my own, maybe, experience with, uh, police. New Brunswick, uh, as you like, one of those, you know, a little, you know, uh, when I was in tenth grade, uh, in the, uh, day program of our primary school, when I had, no, no, uh, drug use, you know, and guy, the officer who was teaching my class, was a, uh, man named, uh, Chin Shoh, actually Chin Shoh. Yeah, so I, 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 you know, the answer is, yeah. Yeah, he would, he would, he would later be, okay, he would later, uh, be convicted of running, uh, drugs and sports, uh, later on, like, uh, which is funny.
What, you did that now?
Oh, when is that? Oh, yeah, um, you know, the, uh, I don't know, the, uh, maybe, or, this, this work. A couple of months ago, I was mugged, not too far from, uh, St. uh, St. Paul, I believe. Uh, right in between the library and the, the car. And, uh, rather immediately after I was mugged, I, you know, ran into a police vehicle, like, over there, um, uh, where the brother was at, and, uh, I told the officer that I was assaulted, and I had my stuff, it was stolen, like, and I think it was a couple minutes ago. And I'm sure the people that, you know, took my stuff, they're in a vehicle, they're on a vehicle. And, uh, I was treated as being lenient, I remember that very well. Uh, the officer, you know, had treated me, or, you know, had given us some sort of legal error, like, I told him, like, yeah, I've got a gun, and I was, you know, a lot, and, you know, it was just a couple minutes ago. And I was waiting, you know, because I got, you know, a couple of years, I got some, a couple of time. And the officer told me, like, you're not going to do this, you know, you're just like, acting like I was, like, totally lenient, so I just, you know, pull out of it. Um, so yeah, I mean, you know, I recorded the happen, eventually, thankfully it's a video, I'm getting it right home, but like, even there, you know, even there, like, you know, dubious about that, you know, and they'll actually, you know, question me, and they're worried about the situation, they're treating me like I was doing something, like, you know, by, you know, it's wrong. But the crime just happened, and I can help. So, yeah, I mean, I have to question the effectiveness, the efficacy of police, and given the latest story today here, uh, I'm not bothered, it's in the country, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, Jim Walsh, uh, Seventy-Sixth May Street, I'll be brief, I took a lot of his time earlier today, I appreciate that. Um, uh, two things, one, um, uh, the cars and the things I, the accounting, uh, about a month ago, I reported on the issue with the cars. And, uh, that weekend following that, um, it was happening again, I contacted the police about it. Uh, I don't know if it was a ticket or something, but they stopped something from happening the next day, I woke up, my car was smashed up with wrecks. And my, uh, side mirror was broken off. I reported that to the police, basically said, you know, I told them the whole situation about, you know, please, calling the police, I don't know, because the guy's calling, talking on council, you know, websites that they knew, meaning call. Um, but I, I just see, like, you know, people getting up and talking about, you know, these issues that are, are really serious, you know, crime issues that aren't being enforced and handled, you know, well, well by the police. Uh, I, I feel that there's a, a, a challenge going on with very simple quality of life issues too, that, that aren't being addressed. When they find it compounding themselves into these larger crime issues, uh, where my car is vandalized. The police were to start enforcing noise issues with some of these vehicles, maybe they would wind up finding, you know, other things wrong with these, these cars, with people, and they get some of them off the street. I think that, uh, I'm concerned generally about my safety, um, you know, and the safety of my family at this point, uh, for the best. And, um, you know, you said you guys at risk to make things happen, you know, speaking up and saying, I called the police about this. Certainly making those risks, going paying with the price for it now, uh, with thirteen hundred dollars in damage to my car. And, uh, the following Sunday after that happened, I called the police again, because the music was still happening, despite the ticket, uh, potentially being issued, I don't know if it happened. Um, and, uh, the police team and, uh, wrote tickets to somebody, they actually caught them, but when the person first saw it coming, they turned the music down, and the police came up, and then they drove off. Two minutes later, the music went right back up. I called the police, they came back and caught the person. Usually what happens is by the time they get there, the music has stopped, or the cars have turned off, and that happened. They caught the person, uh, who, who was doing it. Um, I, uh, called the police afterwards, because after the person left, I saw the person on the front porch pointing at my house and yelling and screaming at my house. And so I, I had no, when I brought that up, they basically said, there's nothing you can know about this. When I brought up the issue of my car, and the master, I will take a report, but there's nothing you can know about this. And so, you know, I, I just think this is something where we need to, we need an entire attitude change in the police department about, we can do something about this, we can serve the rest of New Brunswick. Maybe we need, like, you know, usually I'm an advocate for more police officers, but, you know, maybe it's more training, maybe it's, you know, more, more overtime or something, but, you know, maybe they don't try to deal with all these things. But there needs to be a shift. I, I encourage members of the council to, to look at what can be done to, you know, look at the, look at the police department, look at these challenges that are happening without these internal affairs reports that people are scared to give, and see what can be done to, to build a more responsive police department in New Brunswick. Because that's what I feel like we need after hearing everybody talk today, because I, I certainly don't feel safe now, uh, about these things. But I know speaking up at this council meeting is gonna put me, you know, in further risk of assaults, um, you know, but, uh, there's something needs to be done. Um, you know, to the second issue, a gentleman earlier, uh, who was here spoke about bikes on sidewalks. I guess I am an avid bike rider in the city of New Brunswick. Um, I do not feel safe in some places riding on the street. Livingston Avenue is one of the places where I would go on the sidewalk at times, because there will be cars, they're parked on the side of the road, and you, you have other cars driving by at forty miles an hour, and it's supposed to be twenty-five, and I, I go on the sidewalk. I don't go as fast as I would if I were in the street, because I know there's going to be pedestrians there. But, you know, the city passed, you know, a law about, you know, biking on sidewalks to, for pedestrians, which is important. But you create a dynamic where you're then pushing bike riders into the road. I'm scared to drive down Lee, because a bike rider got shot there a year and a half ago from a random bullet, from driving, you know, riding his bike down Lee. You know, so I, I think that, you know, these are, you know, I, I just, you know, I hope that you said you're gonna be addressing the bike lanes in, in Livingston Avenue, it's an important place to address it, not safer bikes to be out there right now, and it forces bikes into the sidewalk. I hope I don't get a ticket for doing it, um, when I do it, but it's, it's certainly safer for me than driving, you know, riding my bike down Livingston Avenue, where these cars are going forty-five miles an hour in place where it's supposed to be twenty-five, and you've got all these parked cars, and there's no room for bikes on that road. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to make everybody aware that, um, in the, the meeting next month, if that bike race, you change into the post, so we just, uh, hire, uh, with, uh, people.
Me?
Yes.
Uh, Timothy McDougall, um, I live in Somerset. First, I want to say I do support the ban on fracking, um, but I basically have a question. Um, a few years back, I explained this before, but I, I, I don't know if you guys, uh, remember it or not, but I had an incident with, uh, with two po- uh, police officers, you know, I'm not gonna hide their names, I'm gonna say their names, an officer, Gregus, the officer, Quick. I believe they're detectives now, I believe they're, they have some type of superior position, but, um, had a situation with them when they, uh, they, uh, they arrested me, they assaulted me, and, uh, they seized my money, and they planted marijuana on me. Um, I got arrested, I had to bail out, um, of course, I worked, hired a lawyer. Um, I ended up getting all the charges dismissed, and I got all my money back. Um, I just recently filed a, uh, internal affairs complaint with, uh, the internal affairs, probably like, uh, say about a month and a half ago, two months ago. But from what I'm hearing today, it's obvious that nothing's going to come from that investigation. So after that investigation is over, and nothing comes from it, what can I do after that? Maybe, um, Captain...
If you're not happy with your investigation, I mean, obviously, if there's a investigation, I think if there's a, if there's a prosecution, you know. If you're not happy with their investigation, you can, you can, you can...
And that's, that's all I can do?
If, 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 I'm not gonna, okay, but we think that what it's all about, you know, they got your name, to continue with your investigation.
I mean, hopefully, hopefully it's a good thing, I mean, because, you know, all these processes, I've been dealing with... I mean, I just think it's unfair, because, you know, the officers that night, they took me, arrested me, they did what they did, bang, they believed them, they locked me up, I had to get arrested for it. But when I made my accusation, when I, you know, filed my report, they're still working, they're still doing it. And I, I actually seen one of the officers at the, um, shooting that happened on Livingston a little while ago, I believe an officer shot somebody. And I seen one of the officers, he kind of smirked at me, like, like he knew, he's basically telling me, like, you know, nothing's gonna happen. And I feel like helpless, because the system that you guys got in place is working. Thank you.
Thank you, all right.
I just want to say that, like, how much I support, I just touch you on that, but, uh, I just, like, yeah, Lori, Lori, but Lori is so brave to be here tonight, and, you know, like, it's just, I think, it's terrible, like, shame on, on the city that she has to fight so hard to get justice after, like, a violent attack. And I, I just, I don't understand how a war has to finish it already, or how, you know, this, this can go on, but, but it's really, like, it's, it's hard enough. You know, I, I, I really, I can't imagine how tough it is, and I think that, like, you shouldn't have to be just fighting, just justice. And when people come to help, they really, you know, are, they really should do the best that they can to provide, you know, you know, like, you know, send the atmosphere, and, and, you know, if you guys watch the fire, and it's stuff, but like, there's this idea that, like, there's the two sides to the police work. There's like the drug bust, there's all that stuff, and you get all the done, and you kind of, and then there's like, what they call real police work. And that's like violence, and dealing with violence in the community, and I feel like that is so important, and oftentimes, that we're looking. I just, I really hope that, like, when we get, like, the justice to the world, that, that people can be better than that. Thank you.
Yeah, Mark Lands, off, uh, three eighty, Georgia. It's much lighter, so, but I believe it's got some importance. Uh, I don't know if you've noticed, but there's this unintentional downtown tour going on. Where you see different buildings in town, you're trying to find the, the car. Drawing a very terrible, uh, diagram here of what it's like trying to find the wellness and fitness center, parking facility, when you're on Church Street. You cross over George, you come under the former, uh, former, current parking deck, that sign there says, this facility is temporarily closed. No direction as to where to go from there. You come up to the end of Kirkpatrick Street, you would like to make a left, uh, you may go right there, but you'd like to make a left on the pressure, and you said, go on the other side. You're not allowed to make a left on the pressure, there's a sign telling you not to do that. So you say, okay, I'm gonna go up Kirkpatrick Street, and then make a right onto, uh, Patterson. But that one block between, uh, Kirkpatrick and Joyce Kilmer, there's only one way back towards downtown. So what do you do? You go down, uh, Patterson Street instead, to Elm Road, and somebody says, oh, go up Fair Street. So you get a tour of the team, bank, the city hall here, the post office. And then on the next block, or you might make a right on the pressure, because you remember, oh, I can't go up, uh, Patterson Street, because that's one way to the other way, where the entrance to the parking, so it is. So you go up Fair Street, you get to visit Mr. Egan's father's office, and you get in there, you come up Joyce Kilmer Avenue, and you say, okay, maybe I'll go to... Oh, you come up on Patterson Street finally again, and you see a, a parking, largely, sign, the only real sign that tells you this parking is at this. Near, on Patterson Street, there's a little kind of corrugated paper sign that says juror parking here. Now, the jurors already aware of that facility, because they, it's sent in their mail, probably, they could do a little map. But the average person who's come here to have dinner, wants a safe, quick place to park, spends a half hour here getting a tour of the courthouse, the city hall. I called the parking authority, I spoke with somebody who's, uh, property manager or something, I'm not sure of the term. If he first said that, it was, first said it was the city's responsibility to get signage put up, the city, here, or something like that, and the actual number. And then he, the gentleman called back, and then he, he had lunch. He said that now, they're, the process of having signs made, which will direct people to the different parking facilities. My question, and you probably don't have any, so this is for lying, your husband works for the parking facility, uh, parking, do you need an answer to this?
He, he, but he did not work for the parking, he was a part of the, he met her.
Okay, then he maybe asked somebody why, uh, it's taken, I don't know, that facility, it opened seven months, six months? The parking facility, why it's taken now, till now, it, it seems, this, we talk about much more serious things, but even with something like that, like the park, making it easier for people to park, to spend time downtown, it, it, it's just a general blazin' sensitivity, you know? Until somebody, like I said, shines the light, and you have to, uh, fire an officer if it was written in internal affairs. Or there's embarrassment about somebody had a heart attack because they can't find the hospital, or this and that and the other thing. That's what, I mean, this is a small thing, but it's just a general malaise about that. Why, why would it take so long to have parking signs put up, after you spent so much money and time? And with that dopey, uh, amusement park ride, you have that helix, you pick up and get it, you also, you know? What, what's going on? What's going on? Is it money first, and then everything else later? Is that what's going on? Put your hand, you, you can put your hand.
I don't have, um, I don't want to answer, please.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up, and thank you for...
Thank you, pardon, sir.
Okay, I guess, you, you, you guess about all of them. Well, most of them, anyway. And I will have my own couple of cents, uh, upon you two. Um, interesting, interesting math you got there. Uh, hmm, amusement park rides. Uh, Kirkpatrick, yeah, it, it can be kind of a hassle getting into, because I, that's for sure. Uh, I go seven miles an hour up to howl if, um, yeah, I see that, you mean.